Can we vote on that?
Nope.
Do we, do you want to move?
Please.
I'll move that we accept the minutes from God knows when.
Fourteenth.
I'll fill it in.
Fourteenth.
January fourteenth?
No.
Oh yeah, that's where we're past that, January twenty eighth.
Oh yeah, January twenty eighth, that makes sense.
That's why I didn't post them, because we hadn't voted on them yet.
That's right, that's fine.
Anyone going to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So what do we start with, what's the agenda?
I'm just looking for here.
We've got the articles that need to be.
Yeah.
You're gonna make copies for us?
Yeah.
That was a large log you were swinging in the window on Saturday as I drove by.
I'm trying to think, what was I, what was I turning, I was doing a piece of...
Bowl?
Yeah.
That was a bowl.
Yeah, oh, it was a piece of ash.
Was it a piece of ash?
Piece of ash.
Uh, yeah, I know.
Turning it in the window.
And then I, so I rough turned that and then I have a piece of Catalba, half-turned on the lathe.
Where are you turning it?
Uh, in my garage.
Oh, okay.
I have a lathe and, um, Silvery Valley Trustees has their annual gala and they've asked me to donate a piece again this year, so I'm like, ah, we've got like three half-done pieces. I'm like, ah, which one? It must be nice to be an artist. It's so relaxing, because it takes so much concentration that it's all you can think about.
Something that big too.
That's what she was saying.
That'd be that round.
Yeah.
You can do that snow feeling too.
Well, not that it's that big.
Look that big when I was driving by.
Sometimes they feel that big. No, it's, I think it's twelve, I think it's twelve or thirteen inches to, it started out, it started there anyways.
Yeah, it was a good size.
Where did you learn to do that?
Uh, my boyfriend started teaching me and then I watched a boatload of YouTube videos and then I now belong to a woodturning club that we actually...
I took it at the craft center years ago.
Did you? In Worcester?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, I gave it up after the instructor was killed by a piece that came off, off the lathe.
Sure, that can help.
Huh? Well, it, you know, if it lets go, it...
Yeah, I've had pieces come off the lathe before and, you know.
Fast reflexive.
The last one, actually, was right before Christmas and it went away from me and it bounced off the, um, the wall and now I, now I have a big shark's tooth dent in it, I gotta figure out how to fix it, but...
I'll leave it.
But it's a beautiful piece of box elder, so it has all this beautiful red striping through it and everything, it's gorgeous, but the challenge is...
Did you find them? Getting closer.
Here, I have them right here if you wanna see them. I mean, it's just this, I mean, I don't know what, that's all that's, that's what's posted.
Old business, new business?
Yeah, articles.
Semi-new business?
Yeah.
Warren articles, yep, guess that's it.
So which, what's first on the agenda?
Old business.
Has anyone got any old business?
Apparently Tim does.
Thank you. Four, five, six, seven, eight, thank you. Has this, does this, do these have the comments that were made by Lynn?
Um, some did.
Okay.
Some may have.
Is there, I mean, is there cover to this?
What do you want, taking your beer?
Yeah.
One.
Okay, what do you want to take first?
One.
You want to do these first?
What do you want to do?
That's what I'm asking.
What else have we got?
Okay.
Nothing.
What is the reason for number one?
Right, right now, you can have a residential care facility for not less, for not more than six.
Right.
Without site plan review in the residential agricultural zone, you can have it in the multi-family dwelling zone without site plan review and you can have it in the commercial village in the commercial zone with site plan review and special permit, but you can't have it in a limited business zone. But we do allow residential care facilities for not more than a hundred patients in the limited business zone. So if you can have them for a hundred, not less than a hundred, that number can go all the way down basically to two if you want, so...
That would be Dennis and I.
Right, so it seemed to make sense just to add SR to the limited business.
Okay.
But also, the question was, do you want to require site plan review if you're gonna set up in the residential agricultural zone? Or do you just want, I mean, if they're gonna have a special permit, why not have them go through site plan review? That's the easy part.
Right.
So I just thought, and ZBA said, you know, they, they were wondering, there seems to be an inconsistency there, so they, you know, said, can we address it?
Okay.
So that's the thought behind that one. That's one that the ZBA said, hey, what about this?
Is there any discussion on this? Nope.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense.
Did these guys just go through the entire bylaw looking for...
No, it's just when stuff comes up to them.
Yeah, when they get trapped and...
Oh, you know, they, somebody says, what does this mean? They go, uh...
Cause I found some minor stuff like that.
So are you ready to vote on this one?
Why don't we just talk about them and then...
Okay, talk about it.
Yeah. We're done with that one?
Yep.
Good. The Economic Development Committee went to Margaret and said, rather than having the selectmen and the planning board both jointly appoint, just because it takes a lot of time, why not just let the planning board appoint the Economic Development Committee? And they also asked her if, um, they could have the number of members established by the planning board rather than set at five. So that's at their request.
Who did this request?
The Economic Development Committee voted to ask Margaret to consider it and so she said, it seems like the planning board ought to spearhead the article if there's gonna be one. I don't have any trouble with appointing. Um, I'd encourage them to have five, but if they end up in a situation where they can't have five sometimes, they could still function with it. They, you know, you could set it at three and they could have a quorum of two so they could vote. I think that's been one of their problems. So it seemed like it made some sense anyway.
Does anybody have any change they want to make to that? Okay, we're onto three then.
This one, I don't think we, I haven't figured out how to structure this one because what it is, is that the town in 1974 in an article voted to accept chapter forty whatever fifteen C, which has to do with scenic road designation. So they voted that act and in it, it says, if there's a planning board, the planning board will hold a public hearing every time there's gonna be a disturbance to a stone wall or a shade tree. And all the roads in town except the numbered routes were designated as scenic roads.
Wow.
So over the years, we've held hearings with Denny when he was highway superintendent, when he was gonna take down trees that weren't diseased or dangerous, he can do those anytime. But when people had curb cuts, they just went ahead to the selectmen and got a drive, you know, driveway permit, curb cut, and went ahead and did it. But the new building inspector has realized that technically we're obliged, so we had that hearing for Ober, but I mean, you know, it takes weeks to set up the hearing, you gotta put it in the newspaper and then they have to go to the selectmen anyway.
Right.
To get their approval. So I said to Margaret, can we find out, so this, this isn't probably gonna be the language we'd use, it's just the intent would be that the selectmen, whenever there was a curb cut for a single-family residential unit, would have the authority to have the hearing if it's necessary for, um, the disturbance of a stone wall or the taking down of a shade tree. And then everything would pass through them and people could go one stop and get it done. But I would think if it's commercial or anything like that, we'd just keep doing it.
Commercial or local liaison.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
But I don't think this will be the language, because I, we're, we're, what we're doing is we're messing with state statute, which I don't think we can go to the town meeting floor and say we want to change chapter forty.
Chapter forty?
Yeah, chapter, whatever it is, chapter, I don't, anyway, so, but she's gonna look into it. So if we thought it was appropriate, we could just keep working on the language.
But does the state statute say that it's in the planning board's purview?
Yeah.
It does.
It says unless there's a board of selectmen, unless the board of selectmen, if there is no planning board, then the board of selectmen do it.
Why, why is the board of selectmen reviewing driveway permits? They always have. It's like we've got the...
They get...
Destruction approvals kind of randomly distributed between the planning board, the ZBA and the select board. Is there any rhyme or reason to it?
Probably predates you and I. Probably predates our ages combined.
Well, it's just the ability to run people around from one board to the next, go in circles, we don't like them.
Well, I mean, the state statute in terms of scenic roads says, you know, it's the planning board, so...
Yeah.
But we, can't we designate some...
The problem is, I mean, we have to hold a hearing every single friggin' time, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, you know, letting the selectmen do it when they're...
Letting them.
When they're gonna do curb cut anyways. And they have to, so they have to have a meeting to deal with it, they can just post the fact that there's gonna be a public hearing at the same time if there's gonna be a disturbance to a stone wall, so...
They should give curb cuts to us.
No.
No, you don't want curb cuts.
No.
No.
Not much sense, does it?
No.
No.
Well, see, they have to get the fire department, the police department and the highway superintendent to all voice in and they all work for them, so...
Then we need that too, Chris.
We do with subdivisions, you know.
Your pay grade isn't enough here.
There it is. Upon the recommendation, so it's chapter forty fifteen C, after a road has been designated as scenic road, any repair, maintenance, reconstruction or paving work done with respect thereto shall not involve or include the cutting or removal of trees or tearing down or destruction of stone walls, except with prior written consent of the planning board or if there's no planning board, the selectmen of a town or the city council of a city after a public hearing duly advertised twice.
Now, what does it, the selectmen do now?
They issue the...
They issue a curb cut.
Curb cut.
Okay.
Which deals with the safety issues.
So why don't, why don't you set it up so that they have the hearing and everything and then they recommend to us and we can vote on it?
Uh...
Cause it says...
Can we vote if we don't have the hearing?
It says...
You can have the hearing.
They can have the hearing, but we would have to either attend or watch it on video in order to vote on it.
I lay there in bed and watch stuff then.
There is no planning board, the selectmen of the town, so, and we, we may not be able to do anything, but it's, I, you know, to me, it's worth a try, just why make someone go through all that ordeal?
Doesn't make sense.
You know, they come in with an application right after we've had a meeting, then we vote to have a hearing at our next meeting and we get into the newspaper, I mean, it would take, it could take, yeah, it could take two months.
Oh, yeah?
Well, it did.
Especially in the summer.
It did for those folks. Well, I mean, selectmen can...
For what?
Yeah.
Exactly, it's crazy.
Crazy. So that's three, but, so I think there's more language coming on three. For, if the town owns it and it's under the conservation commission or there's a CR on it, that's a permanent CR, um, we've included those parcels that weren't currently on the zoning map as agriculture, recreation, conservation. So I went through it with Walter, I took the, at town meeting last year, there was tax title land that had switched over to conservation, so we've included that and, and some new parcels that have been picked up and a couple pieces that have got CRs on them that if, if it has a CR but there's a building on it, we didn't include it. Cause you can't figure out the language necessarily, how to say that it's in ARC and exclude the land that the building's on. I mean, the meets and bounds, I mean, if you look at the, well, like Benson's for instance, there's a CR on land where the barns are, but I don't, wouldn't necessarily say we'd want to put it in ARC because ARC says nothing, you know, so... But there's, and most of them are tiny little pieces, there's a lot of stuff that's on Dudley Road and the three pieces on Baker and stuff like that, but then there's some bigger chunks that have been picked up, like the land off of Lancaster Road or the piece across from Spooky World and stuff like that, so... So that's what that is.
Be interesting to hear from a member of the conservation...
Conservation Commission.
Oh, huh, we might as well listen to.
So what is the, what is the article section or what?
To see if the town will amend the town of Berlin zoning map by adding the following parcels of land to the agricultural, recreation, conservation zoning district. And there's a whole host of maps and parcels.
So if something has barn on it, why wouldn't it be okay in agriculture?
Well, if we look at ARC... A structure principally used for the raising, feeding, care of poultry for sale is allowed in the ARC zone with a special permit. A greenhouse with a special permit, but structures used for sale of natural products aren't cider mills, sawmills, ice houses, riding stables, dog kennels, veterinary hospitals.
So then what, like a stable, what would, what is that zoned?
Residential agricultural, it can be in that zone, but, but by imposing ARC over...
And still have a CR on it.
Yeah, you could have a CR on it, that doesn't, because you guys would probably have accepted it as appropriate use of a land and allowance under the CR, but...
Right.
ARC isn't gonna give them that leeway, the way ARC's set up now, so that's why I've said, just leave those off for now and we can negotiate. I mean, maybe there's a time when we want to say ARC ought to have a more expansive list of uses that are allowed. Pre-existing uses would be grandfathered and any new use, I mean, according to this, it's gonna require, you know, a special permit. You know, we have to decide whether that's onerous on an ag use, I suppose, you know, if he's gonna come in and say, I want to do a, but that's maybe the reason to leave it out for now, you know?
Right.
Just deal with the ones that are simple and there's a lot of them, you know?
And then just, that narrows the problem children down?
Yeah, and, and it's, and it gives us a more definitive map because it's gonna show us the parcels that are protected with CRs in perpetuity or have become parts of the town conservation commission's responsibility, so...
Just so you know, all CRs are, are in perpetuity.
Yeah, that's the hope.
Yeah, well, that's true, has to be overturned by the state legislator though, by two-thirds vote.
Yeah.
There was a ninety-nine year period.
That's not, no, that wouldn't be a conservation restriction, that might be something else, but a conservation restriction is forever.
Interesting.
Unless you can get it overturned at the state level.
Yeah.
Yep. Which is why we often co-hold, um, our CRs with Silvery Valley Trustees, because then that means the town and SVT would have to, in agreement, go to the state. And as a land trust, their charter wouldn't allow that.
Yeah.
So. Extra layer of protection.
I like it.
Anything more on this?
Kind of wondering why we're excluding fur farms?
What? What'd you say?
When, we went through this list once before and talked about cider mills and all this sort of stuff and...
Sawmills.
And said, and Charlie said, remember, Charlie said, no, I won't, I don't want you to touch it, so we, we left it.
Left it.
So it's still here.
The Ming farm at the, end of Allen Road is long gone.
Yeah, long gone.
I would put that in the book.
I don't know, that was probably before you and me also.
I was looking at old pictures in the house the other day and they're visiting a fox farm or something, you know, because there's all these little foxes in these cages back in the...
Back in the day.
Twenties and thirties, yeah. Five. So...
So where are you now?
Five. See if the town will amend the zoning bylaws.
I don't know, five.
What'd you do with all your other pages?
These are the ones you gave me.
I already hit that before, I missed.
No.
What is this? What page is this? Is that more of this?
No, now you've got five. To see if the town will amend the zoning bylaws, section five forty, home-based contracting business by adding a new five forty ten, the business must be owned and operated by the owner of the dwelling or an immediate family member. So Lynn wrote, this makes it worse.
Yeah.
If, if one of my sons wanted to have a home-based contracting business at my home, even though he doesn't live there, could he?
Apparently not.
No.
No.
Right, it's written.
So she says, the business must be owned and operated by the owner of the dwelling or an immediate family member. The business must be at least...
What, wait a minute, immediate family member must be what?
Well, then, I mean, you know, I had thrown in, what did I throw in? Parent, child or partner. Then she says, partner in what sense? Business partner or domestic partner? And then, and then she said, how about the business must be at least fifty percent owned and operated by an individual with at least fifty percent equity in the real property, which is his or her primary residence? So what they have, I mean, I guess the ZBA's faced with people that come in and say they want to run a home-based contracting business, but what's their relationship to the property? You know, I mean, the idea was that we wanted people to live here, we wanted people that lived here to be able to run a home-based contracting business in a residential agricultural zone. We argued that...
What if they're renting the property? Why wouldn't they be able to run a business?
Well, that's the, that's what she wants us to clear up, I think, is they don't know how to answer those questions, so they want help with language that'd, you know, help clean it. So it seems like our primary goal was to make sure that that small operator could live in his home...
Incubate the business.
And have a young business that could either stay that size, because he was a, you know...
So proprietor.
Yeah, or if he grew and we, ZBA would tell him, if you grow to the point where you need more employees, more vehicles, more, you gotta get out of here, because you're a commercial enterprise and you're not a residential use.
That's already in the...
So...
Right.
But I think they're, they're, you know, they think people are, evidently people are, well, the rental case is the question, you know?
Why would we discourage that?
So that's the issue.
So what are we gonna do with this?
Yeah, cause there's a table here, how many employees you can have based on how many square feet you've got.
Right.
If you have a renter and that renter leaves and a new renter comes in, do they have to come back and get permission to do the business there?
Probably.
Well, it's, does the, does the, the, the right to occupy and, and develop, I mean, and work on that site go with the business or with the property?
I think it goes with the property.
Yeah, I could see maybe a requirement that the person lives there, but why do they have to own it?
Businesses carry on...
Another rental property?
Hmm?
Another rental property?
Yeah, don't you want to fix up houses that are potential, one in the middle of the one, the hot dog house, somebody could run a small business there.
Another hot dog.
Hot dog house.
There's a nice wood shop, Carolyn should have rented it, because she could have done her woodworking in the giant shop they had.
Every giant shop. Thank you, though.
But you'd be right now, right near Route sixty-two, you could have put your wares out in the...
That doesn't sound good.
I know, right? I didn't realize you were running that kind of business, Jay.
So they gotta renew it every five years? That's, we added that a couple years ago, right?
Right.
Who's they?
The person running the business?
Person running the business? Or the person that owns it?
Person running it. Well, that's a good point.
Who do you make responsible?
Equipment related to the home base. So...
Were they a local resident?
Yeah, maybe we don't want someone living in a property and someone else running a business there.
So what we're saying, yeah, because then people would just be able to say, yeah, you can run your trucks out of mine.
Yeah, leave it, leave it there, yeah.
Exactly. But that's resident, not owner.
So the business must be owned and operated by, you want it to be someone that's dwelling on the property, right?
Yeah.
Residing, huh?
Yeah.
So we're saying that in order to operate a home-based contracting business, you have to reside on the property from which it's operated. Right?
And who checks on them to see if it's growing? And who checks on them to see if it's growing out of size?
Well, every, that's why we put that every five years.
Yeah, every five years.
Oh, yeah.
Every five years they have to...
We gotta renew.
With whom?
The ZBA.
Yeah.
ZBA?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless an earlier expiration date is specified by the ZBA in a special permit, all special permits issued under this bylaw shall expire automatically upon the expiration of five years from the date of issuance. Prior to expiration, the applicant may apply for renewal of a special permit for another five-year period. Set application to comply with all the provisions of section 540 of this bylaw. So we're, we're more inspired by the notion of residing.
Right.
And then we don't have to get into this, how are you related, and who owns it, and any of that stuff.
Give us your DNA.
Right. It's just, if you reside there, you can apply for a home-based contracting business. That's cleaner.
Hmm.
That accomplishes what we're after, too.
I would think so.
I mean, we're just, we're, we want, we want somebody that wants to run a small operation.
And we don't want somebody from out of town using the property, yeah.
Taking advantage of it, yeah. Okay.
So if, if Joe Smith comes in and rents a place, and has a big garage, and his brother lives in Marlboro, and he says, "Oh, you can use this," he can't.
Not unless the brother moves in.
Do you have to show proof of residency?
Yeah, and not on the street list.
Be on the street list.
Street list or elector bill. Otherwise, "Yeah, I live there, I just moved in last week."
The business must be operated by a resident of...
Berlin.
The dwelling.
Yeah.
Or some similar. Right? Okay, good. I like that.
And if requested, proof of residency.
Hmm.
Real ID, now you can use a real ID for residency.
It's a good way to get a registered about.
Oh, it's easy.
My wife's been trying for nine months.
To do what?
To get a real ID. There's a set of documents you need to have that she can't get, like, I don't know, birth certificate and...
Oh, no, it's like a...
Is she a legal alien?
W-2, but she doesn't have a W-2 because she works for the farm, right? And, uh...
A tax return counts.
Gun license?
I don't think so.
No, it does.
1099s do.
A tax return.
Gun license.
With your name, address, and social security number.
I wonder why she didn't use that?
Or a passport. I just did it with my daughter, a month ago, so...
Because a passport's not enough, right?
Correct. You have to show proof of residency, legal residency of the country, legal residency of the state, and, like, I think that you're really who you say you are, so...
You, you can't do it with a birth certificate?
Gun license.
Birth certificate is residency of the country.
Right.
Sure of gun license?
No. Fortunately, there's times when she'd shoot me with it.
We went to the registry.
Oh, six.
Okay.
To see if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, 541 table, home-based contracting business, by adding as registered with the DMV after every instance where GBW appears, so gross vehicle weight, so...
It's not good enough.
I, I, I think they just, the ZBA ends up with a need to be able to...
Right.
Give a specific definition of what they're after, so...
Right.
She said if we had language similar to that, we'd...
We all set with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jay, you all set with six?
Hmm, six.
Yep.
Okay. Seven.
Guess I can't keep my dump truck on my property, huh? They're fine.
Yeah.
Oh, farm, I get to do anything, give farm things. Awesome. Want to tell you about the granting court.
Oh, I wanted to find out what the rationale is for number seven. Did you ever find out then? I was gonna call Lynn, but I don't have her phone number.
You know what? I wrote her and I said, "Tell me."
Yeah, what'd she say?
She told me.
But it's a secret.
It mainly centers around, it's a, let me see, here. See if the town will amend the Berlin zoning bylaw, section 1142, changes requiring a special permit as outlined in article 11. Non-conforming uses and structures, by adding long sentence, no pre-existing non-conforming structure may be expanded by more than 50%. So we used to have language in the zoning that had this type of restriction for pre-existing non-conforming structures. And so, I think what the ZBA is saying is, if, if it's a substandard lot, and it's, so it's a half-acre lot, or 30,000 square feet, or whatever, and you've got a structure on it...
Thank you.
And the goal, I mean, there's no limit to how big you can expand it, you know? It just, I think...
There's a lot coverage restriction, right?
At the 50% green.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's more than that. So, but that's the, that's the factor. So there, I, evidently, they run into situations where they're questioning how, how much latitude to give somebody, you know? Is it, is it 50%? Is it double? You know, can you really, do you really wanna see a structure double? So you're, you're playing with structures. What, what have you found? How big are you, how big have you had to go, or wanted?
Well, I think it would be a problem, because, you know, my house in Weston, which was a historic house, I doubled the size of it, which made it salvageable. Otherwise, it would have been gotten...
Ripped down?
Bulldozed.
Yeah.
And then this one I bought on Crosby Road, depending on whether we put a second floor in them, where the barn is gonna be a living room, family room, or kitchen. So, if there's, if there is a second floor, it's gonna be more than 50%. And the problem is that, you know, if I'm considering buying that prop, or not back when I was considering buying the property...
Right.
If I wanted to save the house and somebody else was just gonna knock it down, I've got the disadvantage of not knowing for sure whether I'm gonna be able to make it large enough, you know, to make, to make it work, right?
And our, and one of our objectives ought to be to see that those structures that are here remain if we can do it, right?
If that's the goal, this is...
I mean, it seems like if you went and polled people in town, they'd say, "We don't want people ripping down structures, because you guys have been so tight on expansion that they, they can't do it."
Right, yeah. Right, because it's an unknown. It's not like, I mean, I would assume that I'd be able to get permission to do it, but what if I don't?
Right.
You know?
So...
Why take the risk?
So is there a limit? Like, is double a limit? Or, or should we just keep our hands off, like it is now?
You talking footprint or entire square footage of the building?
No, it's square footage.
Yeah.
But then, I mean, if it was a, if it was a non-conforming small lot, and to mansionize...
The green area would...
Yeah, run it to the edges of the property, doesn't make sense, but in your case in Crosby, it's plenty of land there. So if you actually doubled the physical size of that building, it wouldn't be an issue. It wouldn't even come close to a quarter of the...
Well, and historically, people have done that. I mean, the, you look at, well, like, Catigan's piece.
I think it'll want it to...
They're gonna, they're gonna rip off the L and expand the structure, but it's already been expanded a number of times. I mean, it was a small little cottage to start with. And if you look at it, you, I mean, it's on a good tight piece of land, green area's there, and, but that's a conforming use, so, you know? But it's an example of taking a structure and adding to it and adding to it.
Look at Rose's house on Pleasant Street.
Mm-hmm.
They put a second floor on it.
Yep. Yeah, if they put an L off the back, they'd be way over.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. In the event that the zoning enforcement officer determines that the non-conforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals may, by special permit, allow such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So they have latitude there already.
They do.
Shouldn't that, shouldn't that kind of an increase be approved by the Board of Health?
Well, if it's gonna increase bedrooms, it's gonna have to go through the Board of Health.
It's gonna go through Board of Health anyways. And if it's old, it goes through the Historic Commission, lots of groups.
Non-conforming, single, and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed upon a determination by the zoning enforcement officer that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure in the issuance of a building permit where applicable.
Right, so if you were, if you were to put an addition on an existing non-conforming building...
Yeah.
That, you know, didn't meet the setback requirements or something, then you'd have to get permission anyways.
Right.
But if you're gonna pick a side of the house where you can expand it, not...
This is in response to Oak Street. 28 Oak Street.
That's what they're thinking. That's what they got caught.
What on Oak, what on Oak Street? Went up at the end?
Bartlett's old house?
Yeah.
Um, they stayed in the, as far as I know, they stayed in the, well, there was a little contentiousness about whether they stayed in the footprint or not. There was an overhang out the back, probably three feet off the back of the building, if that, that they put a foundation on. But other than that, they just went straight up, but I think they did three stories on one part.
Wow!
So...
But I think...
So they stayed in the footprint. The way the lots are divided, the lot that the house is on...
Was non-conforming to begin with.
Was non-conforming to begin with. Because they added so many bedrooms, Board of Health made them put in a tight tank, so that, but they're right on the river. Oh, yeah, we had all kinds of fun with that. But they increased the entire size of the building by probably more than 50%.
So they went to three stories anyway, they did.
So, so, so take that, take, why wouldn't we want them to be able to do that? They put in a tight tank. They, they did not increase the footprint of the building. They went up, which is not disallowed.
Right, but how far should you allow someone to go up?
You got a height restriction on, on buildings.
Yeah.
Oh, right, that's right, because there's some kind, some question about whether they were within that, by like a foot.
And, and so if, if, the height is measured on a gambrel roof by the half-point between the peak and the plate, so...
Right. So I think they captured there.
It's 35 feet or whatever, so...
Right.
And they probably just met that.
Right, I think they were at 34.
Yeah.
Or 34 and a half. Right, so is it more about the footprints of the house, the percentage of the lot?
I don't see a problem. Am I missing something?
I don't see a problem. I mean, maybe if the foundation they put under the porch was, didn't have adequate setback, that'd be a problem, I guess. Was that an issue?
Uh, no, actually, they were outside of the 100 foot as far as conservation was concerned, so, and it was in the back of the building, so...
And they just filled in, where they had the overhang to begin with.
Right.
Yeah. They had a garrison out the back, and they just filled it in. They probably needed the structure to go up another floor.
So if...
I still don't see a problem.
If we're not careful and we try to put limits, we're gonna force people to rip down...
Structures.
Structures.
Yeah.
Which changes the nature of the neighborhood. I mean, you've watched it, east of us, yeah. All of a sudden, that house that's been there 50 years is gone, and the mansion is there anyway. Right?
Yeah.
In the event that the zoning enforcement officer determines that the non-conforming nature of such structure would be increased by the proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change, the Board of Appeals may allow such reconstruction where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental. So, I mean, if, if they said you're gonna dwarf your...
Neighbor.
Neighbor in some way, and, you know, cut back, they, now, the question is whether they'd get anywhere in court, right?
Right.
Probably they'd say, you know, "Who are you to determine whether?"
But would you get the same issue if you took the existing property down and put a large house on it? You could, the neighbor may complain also.
Yeah.
What's the difference?
Yeah, but if it's already, you couldn't put up a brand-new house on a non-conforming lot that was huge.
Oh, yes, true.
Well, I mean, the, the trick is to keep part of the original structure and...
Two walls and then boom.
Right. And so you, well, like...
Had that one on River Road in Hudson.
Well, David Wheeler's, um, mother's house.
Oh, yeah.
Rena's.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
There, there's a house there that was there originally.
I think they exceeded some of the footprint of it, though.
But again, there probably, there was an allowance to increase ex amount back then. It may have been before we took off the, the language. Okay, so, we're not keen on that one, right?
No.
See if the town will amend the zoning bylaw, section 51, in-law apartments, 512, maximum size by adding as calculated the date of plan submission after total floor An in-law apartment shall comprise no more than 35% of the dwelling's total floor area.
Wonder what that's about?
Well, I think... She says that language is okay with them. Okay with them. It's an issue of a sliding scale. When is, what is 35%? If I come in and I increase the size of the structure, and then say I wanna increase it again for an in-law apartment?
In other words, you're kind of piling on.
Well, that's the question. Let me see if I can find...
Yeah, but it doesn't say you can pile on.
Yeah, but it's like hitting it twice, I think.
Why would you be allowed to hit it twice?
"In-law accessory." Clarification of the thirty-five percent of a dwelling's floor area is needed by using dwellings... What did we do? "An in-law apartment shall comprise no more than thirty-five percent of the dwelling's possessive total floor area." By using dwellings, does it mean the apartment could be thirty-five percent added on to the main residence? Should it say thirty-five percent of the total floor area of both the main dwelling and the apartment? Or could the dwelling...
No, 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 no. It was always intended to be thirty-five percent. An addition, as an addition.
"Shall comprise no more than thirty-five percent of the dwelling's total floor area."
Correct.
Initially, when we brought it in, it was that you have a structure and you wanna create an in-law apartment in it. You can use thirty-five percent of the existing structure.
Or you could add on an addition that was no more than thirty-five percent.
And I don't think we were involved with terms... We were talking about the existing structure, so...
Read it again.
Clarification of thirty-five percent of a dwelling's floor area...
See, if you go back to the intent. The intent is in the existing, single-family home of residents, right? Provide use of a group of rooms in an existing family, single-family home of residents. So I agree with you there.
Was it inside the existing?
It's within the existing.
Right.
It's not an addition.
So if I come in and I get a building permit to expand the structure by fifty percent, and it was two thousand square feet now, and now it's gonna be three thousand square feet, I should be able to have a thousand-foot in-law apartment in it, right?
Agreed.
And so, "The in-law apartment shall comprise no more than thirty-five percent of the dwelling's total floor area." So, which is a chicken before the egg? So if I have a structure that's two thousand square feet and I come in and apply... I can do seven hundred and fifty or whatever. If I come in and apply for a building permit to add an in-law apartment, and it's gonna add a thousand feet, then that complies too, right?
No.
No.
I'm gonna... I've come in and asked for a...
A building permit.
A building permit to expand the structure by a thousand square feet. And I'm gonna make the in-law apartment a thousand square feet. Because it's...
And how much is the original building?
Well, it's thirty-three percent of the new... Of the new.
Of the new. But what the intent was is for it to be part of the existing structure. Right?
Right.
Because if you read the intent part of it, use of groups of rooms in an existing, single-family home.
Home. "Or in the plans of a new, single-family residence as a so-called in-law apartment with its own kitchen and bathroom for the use of a limited number of persons and where such use of rooms as an apartment is clearly accessory to the principal if any necessary..." It's the intent to provide for the use... I mean, when we first did this, we were saying, people have got these houses, they're big sometimes, you know. Smaller numbers of family members, let them create an in-law apartment within the existing structure.
Right.
Thirty-five percent. So then we've had some new structures built or in the plans of a new, single-family residence as a so-called in-law apartment. So someone could come in and say, I wanna build three thousand square feet, I'm gonna have a thousand-foot in-law apartment. That's fine. I come in and I say I wanna make an addition to an existing structure, a thousand square feet, it's gonna be an in-law apartment. That's still fine.
Well, depends on what the size of the original structure is.
Two thousand is the underlying?
Yeah.
That's more than thirty-five percent.
Six hundred and sixty square feet.
No, it's thirty-three percent.
What?
It's thirty-three percent, yeah. So it's under the thirty-five.
Two thousand square feet?
If you've got two thousand square feet to start, and you add a thousand, you're at three. And a thousand is gonna be thirty-three percent. So it's under the thirty-five. But this... Nothing we've said in here provides for that. We've said new construction with an in-law apartment in it or an existing structure where you carve out one.
Correct.
So...
They're troubled by the additions.
Yeah, yeah. When you... It says, when you say the original structure, it may be thirty-three percent of the whole, but it's not thirty-three percent of...
What the existing was.
Right.
Of what the existing was. But that's...
What was that?
But again, you're gonna end up in a situation where I say, I'll rip the house down and build a whole new thing.
Right.
And...
And put a thousand square foot...
And build three thousand square feet and have a thousand-foot apartment.
Yeah, if the kids wanna live at home, why can't you put an addition on for them?
Because you oughta be kicking them out.
Well, people can put on addition.
But you can charge them rent. I can give you a hint, though, they don't pay it.
"By using dwellings singular, does it mean the apartment could be thirty-five percent added on to the main residence?" And we're saying yes. It could.
Could.
Right. "Should it say thirty-five percent of the total floor area of both the main dwelling and the apartment? Or could the dwellings be changed to dwellings plural?" So I think I'm... We're going at this the wrong way. So they want us... They want us... Well, they want something in there that says, "You can add on to an existing structure..."
Right.
"...and that new floor area will be the figure that's used to determine thirty-five percent." Right?
Sounds... That's what it is.
So it's clear that if you put an addition on, it counts as opposed to only being able to ever add a third into the size of the existing structure.
Yeah.
But you know something? I think part of the problem is you're mixing two different approaches together in the same.
Okay.
Yeah, because the intent was for it to be in an existing dwelling.
Right, so this is like...
Reconfiguring the original rooms in the existing dwelling to carve out not more than thirty-five percent of the dwelling space to be an in-law.
But if you took your house and added an addition now and in three years said your in-laws wanted to move in to the addition...
I'd be moving out. Have the whole house. I'm on camera.
We'll use a hypothetical view.
Oh, okay. Thank goodness. It's not in the sweat there. No, I get it.
Your intent wasn't to get around it. Your intent was to add on. You added on while the kids were getting older and needed more space. Five years from now, they're gone, and your in-laws need a space.
Your intent's changed, right?
But I'm saying, Tim, is you're mixing the two things together. It needs to be separated. Because that adds to confusion when you're trying to rule on it, you know?
Well, but why can't I go into the ZBA and say, "I want to add on to my existing dwelling and create an in-law apartment"?
Write it separately. Write it separate. Don't make it part of that...
Oh, so you wanna...
Add separate...
Yeah.
Separate line.
It makes it cleaner for them to deal with. You're mixing newer construction with existing. I mean, you make it... You make more interpretations possible.
See, I think the way they've written it, it just places a reference point on the new plan as opposed to the existing structure, right? So you got a house that's a thousand feet. You bring in a plan that's gonna grow it to fifteen hundred, and you wanna take five hundred of it. Basically, the addition, you wanna make it into a in-law apartment. It says that when you calculate the thirty-five percent, you're calculating it on the new, larger footprint instead of the original house, that's all. So it seems confusing, but I think it's effective at doing that. Because it just says the reference point is the new plan as opposed to the reference point in the current size of the existing house. They must've gotten into a discussion with somebody where some people thought it was thirty-five percent of the current house as opposed to of the enlarged house.
But if you read the intent, that's what the intent was. The preamble of the front.
Oh, is that right?
Sure. Read it.
Clarifying thirty-five percent of the... "By using dwellings, does it mean the apartment could be thirty-five percent added on to the main residence?" That's... They're not confident about allowing that.
Oh.
"Should it say thirty-five percent of the total floor area of both the main dwelling and the apartment? Or could the dwelling be..." And so their...
Position.
So should it say thirty-five percent of the total floor area of both the main dwelling and the apartment? So if I propose an addition and it's gonna be...
Oh, you know what you could do? You could put in of the dwelling, parentheses, any... Including any proposed additions.
Yeah, instead of whatever we said based on the date of application, right?
Right. That's confusing.
We'll write up the formula so that they know how to interpret it.
True.
Maximum size. In-law apartments, maximum size planning as calculated at the date of plan submission.
Has anybody applied for any special permits yet for their in-law apartments?
And so our feeling is that if limiting results in the demolition of a structure and the replacement with an entirely new structure, we've lost something potentially. So we don't have trouble with someone calculating their thirty-five percent based on the proposed new square footage.
Yeah. I would put including any proposed additions because that's very simple.
Okay.
As long as they're not constructed over a railroad bed.
Good.
Yeah, what it's written, we would have a tough time getting that through town meeting. It would be discussed for several nights.
Block that time out. Are you okay now?
Am I okay? I've always been okay.
You're okay.
"See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 710 Common Driveways. By adding a new Section 716, any change or structural addition or modification beyond general maintenance in the location with length, height, or material composition of a common driveway affecting its accessibility by users or emergency vehicles or by redirecting water runoff must be approved by the Berlin Planning Board. And if it is determined that the modification is substantial, a public hearing will be required."
Was this a ZBA suggestion?
It came from... Yeah, ZBA. We threw ideas back and forth. We were trying to come up with...
Got it.
Something. Give us some opportunity to participate. Seems like... I think the language probably gotta be... There may be some... I may wanna create another sentence in there out of what's there. But is that our... That's our objective, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have a say at the table.
Because we don't have any say right now.
And no say.
Yeah, once it's gone, it's gone, is the way we've looked at it.
Do we have that same authority over other things that require our review? Such as? I mean, after construction, when modifications are made, do we always require people come back to us?
On what?
Depends on what it is. I think the overlays, yeah. They're supposed to provide us with, you know, their tree warden, or tree warden's report. And we're supposed to get the certificates that they've cleaned all the storm drains.
Yeah, Margaret's beginning to work on those. She's going after them. It's good.
Well, we cleaned it up, well, four, five years ago. We required everybody to do it, and they brought it up to that level. I don't remember seeing anything after that.
But if someone has a subdivision and they get approved, and then years later, they decide to modify it...
What if they modify it? If it's a road that's been accepted by the town, they better not be modifying it because it's town property.
Yeah, we've taken it over.
We've taken it over. So if it's not a town-approved road, they modify it. Okay, so it's not. Now they modify it. And they wanna bring it before the town to accept as a road.
You mean if it's a...
No.
Suppose it isn't. So suppose it's a subdivision without a town-accepted road.
So it's a private way.
It's a private way, then.
It's a private way.
Yep.
That we approved.
Yep.
And the subdivision control laws, right?
Yep.
And someone wants to do one of these things, modify the width, height, material. They need to come back to us?
It's a private way.
Well, but so is the common driveway, right?
Yeah, you're saying if somebody came in and wanted to reduce the width of their way or change angles on their way, do we have a stipulation in any of our language that says you've gotta come back and talk to us before you can modify it?
Right, because you think the subdivision requirements and the common driveway requirements should at least be the same whichever... Whatever way we choose to make them.
Well, I think you're right. I think that means we probably oughta be... I mean, we oughta look at these anyway. Nineteen twenty-one or something like that.
When?
I don't know. I mean, when was the last time we did anything with changing these? It'd be good to get... I was contented in sometime. But that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
You would know about it.
We can make modifications to that without going to a town meeting, right?
Yeah, we can do that with just a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
So we don't have to have that done for the warrant.
No, but we could go ahead and...
We could go ahead if we...
Figure out a strategy.
Exactly. So if this makes it a town meeting, we can amend that till in the summer.
Oh, we can.
To match it. Yeah, we don't need... We just need a public hearing.
Okay. All right.
So we can make them match up.
You want them to be similar.
Yeah.
You don't have trouble with it necessarily, you just want them to be the same, you know?
I'm just wondering what our...
Responsibility is.
Yeah. What our authority is after something's constructed and in use. In other cases, do we have the authority to...
Well, a building inspector does. Then it gets to the ZBA.
I don't know if he would. I don't know if a building inspector's gonna get even alerted when somebody's modifying a subdivision road.
I wonder if he was gonna complain.
Well, somebody's always gonna complain. So it comes before somebody eventually.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's just a precedent issue. Do we normally, when people approve a plan, people build whatever it may be, and then later they wanna modify it, when do they have to come back to us? And when can they just do it?[1756.82] With a billing permit if necessary?
Just asking for a friend.
Did, did ZBA have any comment or want us to change any of this language?
Change.
Of number nine?
So where it says by users or emergency vehicles or redirecting water runoff must be approved by the Berlin Planning Board, period. If it is determined, oh, if at the discretion of the planning board, is what they were saying. It is determined that the modification is substantial, a public hearing will be required. Just break off a separate sentence, instead of running everything together. Which makes sense, it's cleaner. But that's our, I think that covers the spectrum of what we're talking about.
What, what modifications to a subdivision, you know, future modifications to a subdivision, does.
Road?
Someone need to come back to us for?
It's only the, well, if they weren't gonna modify the lot lines, because they decided that the easements, I mean, they've come in and said, look, we've realized that the reserve area for the septic isn't possible to put on a lot, or we have to come in and, and create a easement on an adjacent property for, you know, the embankment that we're gonna have to build to support this above-ground septic system. So, or they're, so they're modifying lots, they may change the configuration of the roadway. They may do something with drainage different, they may excavate and find that they've got some underground pool that the Conservation Commission missed, you know, and then as a result, they want to hide it, so they dig a deep hole and bury it somehow, you know? So if they want to change their road. You've never seen anything like that.
No, I've never seen anybody bury a pond.
Oh, they do it all the time.
Yeah.
Yes, you have.
They said I've never seen anybody do it.
I'm trying to do one, that one's sweet, but the Conservation Commission's giving me trouble.
Giving you trouble. I mean, you wander around the back bay, you know, you realize people build stuff all the time.
I'm sorry, since nineteen eighty-four.
But yeah, I think we could come up with some language that made it clear.
But the precedent is that if, if I have a subdivision and ten years later, I want to do the things you talked about, right?
Yeah.
Easements, lot lines, modify the roadway, those all require coming back to the planning board.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's for the common driveway, then it would make sense, what's written here would make sense.
Especially if you had to put a new septic system in eighteen years out, and you needed to easement off somebody's property to shore it up for an above-ground. Rules have changed, everything's changed, so.
Yeah, or you may, you may change the lot line, so your lot line includes your system and their backyard now includes your backyard, you know, so. Can happen. And the provision's there for it.
Right, that's good.
What happens if you pave a subdivision road?
And you, you hadn't agreed to pave it in the first, we've all.
Yeah, if it was, if it was.
So we, we've talked about, if, in some cases, we've said we wanted a surface that was stable but impervious.
Correct. We wanted the base to be.
Pervious, right?
Right, pervious. We wanted the base to be at least brought to.
Yeah.
Our road standards.
Yeah.
And then the pavement part of it, we allowed them to go, because it happened over here at what's-his-face's on West Street.
Yeah.
Because if you notice, the paved width is about fourteen feet, but their road bed is a standard road.
Where, where's that?
Tended to.
Oh, the new one, the new.
The three hot, three, three-house subdivision that's up in there.
Yeah.
They have a stone wall in front of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And with patties, I think we said.
Patties were.
They could use, you know, they have those.
Blocks that, that stuff grows in.
Right? And we said that was acceptable.
Right. So if someone built a common driveway with crushed stone, and then ten years later, they want to pave it, they need to come back to the planning board?
I don't think so.
Depends on how.
Well, that's what's being proposed.
Depends on how it was written, of the agreement it was written, right?
Modification in the da-da-da, material composition of a common driveway. So that if you want to pave your common driveway, this would require you come back to the planning board.
But would that paving fall into the maintenance part of it?
If it hadn't been paved.
Yeah, but it hadn't been.
If it had been paved, then it had been repaved, it's maintenance.
Oh, yeah, maybe.
Right?
Yeah.
Now, if it hadn't been paved to begin.
I'm saying if it was originally crushed.
If it was originally crushed stone.
They'd have to come back.
Now that would be, I would think that would be a material change.
Right. And we'd probably want to review it, because we would ask questions about.
Runoff.
Runoff.
Runoff, exactly, because now you're making a change.
Stormwater management.
Yeah.
We want to make sure nothing's happening to a butter's that's gonna screw them up by increasing the runoff.
And things like, are they gonna pave the turnouts and stuff like that, or are they gonna leave them crushed stone?
Yeah.
We, I want to see what they were intended to do.
I mean, we've gone with fairly passive drainage over the years, but the minute you begin to increase runoff, if you're going from crushed stone to something else, yeah.
I mean, you could pave it and throw all the water into the middle of the street, and then the highway's bullshit at us.
Yeah.
That's not a good thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're, ten, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section five eighty-five, medical marijuana and adult-use marijuana establishments by adding a new section, five eighty-five, point four, six. No more than X marijuana establishments or RMDs may be active at any given time. So the formula is.
Who's formula?
The state's formula. As a, as a community that, that voted to provide for the use, we can do X percent of the total number of liquor licenses that.
Off-premise liquor.
Off-premise liquor licenses.
Huge, yeah.
And how, do you know how many we've, how many off-premise liquor, we got, what, fifteen or something like that?
No, that's total, off and on.
Oh, that's total? So it's like.
Fourteen off and on, but I think the off is a lot smaller, it's a lower number. I know the state median is around, I think it's, it comes out to be about four. I'm thinking, we probably have between four and six. When I just did a rough, yeah, when I did a rough estimate, like if we consider BJ's, the two liquor stores.
That's how many we've got right now.
But I couldn't find it online. I called here today, I couldn't get anyone to answer, and I've been told the numbers before. I just, I couldn't find it, but I'm, I'm thinking it's between four and six, but.
Do you want me to go see if you're still here on that answer?
Yeah, that, because that does impact things, because if the number's a fraction, the state recommends that you round up. So if it's under one, then it becomes one, anything over one, a fraction, like one point two, would be rounded up to two. They suggested, you know.
Is that the state?
Of course, yeah. So it's, but I, yeah, I did some, so. I don't know, I did send y'all an email today, but it was pretty late in the day, and I didn't make copies of it. If you want, I'll give you all a copy, just because on the front. Yep, in the front, I just have the language there. So the state allows, so if you, you can have a cap as low as the minimum number. So if we say it's five, then that's, that would be twenty percent of five would be one. So your maximum cap could be as low as your minimum requirement. And when I look, I know that I sent you, in this email, I also, I sent you the language Harvard used. And also some language that Bolton used, but that really wasn't with respect to limiting the numbers. They decided to limit it in other ways, and it's with respect to distance from, you know, any area that might, might have children, residential areas and so on. So that's attached to this. You'd like to take a look at it. Some cities such as Framingham, they use their maximum cap is also their minimum, and, and I know that many towns have done that. I think Margaret was going to, to locate, to find, to talk to some of her colleagues to see what towns similar to us have done. But what I found is they're all tending to use that minimum number as the maximum cap, which.
Thank you.
Tends to make sense, since the, the liquor license number we're using is actually a maximum cap, right? So it's a percentage of that. I also attached at the end the actual language from the state law. From chapter ninety-four, section three, and you can read that on your own, but essentially, it says twenty percent of the number of licenses issued within the city, within the city or town, the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises where sold. So what do we have? It's off-premise.
Allowed is to issue is one.
What do you say? How do you read that?
Off-premise retail.
Yeah.
Allowed to issue one.
What's that number? What's five? What's W M?
I don't know, do you know? What's A V W M, W U M C?
Those are the package.
So, oh, the name, what?
Berlin Liquors, Berlin Golf, Energy North, Wine Cellar at, within BJ's Hostel Club, so there's four.
Oh, so the three purple.
How about one ten?
The two green, and these two green.
About who?
One ten girl.
So we have a total allowed of seven?
What's underneath that?
Total issue five.
Yeah, one ten is part of that, Regal, TJ Friday, Kadoba.
So seven. So that's one point four, twenty percent. So I guess two would be the, you round up to two. Which, you read on, you know, I, I found, you know, Wheat Maps, it's a marijuana industry company. They had a policy document in twenty eighteen that I was looking at, where, you know, in order to, to help towns navigate through this, they gave some examples here, to the extent that local governments wish to set caps on marijuana retailers. Data from around the country demonstrates that optimal density is one marijuana retailer for seventy-five hundred residents. They give an example in Denver, they have a density level of one marijuana retailer for thirty-one hundred. And you can see Portland, Oregon.
Public beverage, are there?
We're definitely above the median for the state when it comes to liquor licenses. Total liquor licenses, we're about almost triple the state. So.
But, I mean, we're, we're an anomaly. We're, we're a small, small town with two, now three, significant projects. I mean, it's beyond anything that any small town has, Solomon Pond Mall, Island Commons, River Bridge, I mean, that's. So it's, it's, it's hard to base it on population, especially when we're surrounded by towns that have got, you know, whatever. So, but anyway, I, I understand your point. I don't think it makes any sense, though, in this regard. Or what we're saying is that that number could be two.
It, it, yeah, yeah, it could be two without any ballot initiative, so on the town meeting floor, you could vote for it to be two.
And, and the way that procedure would work is that we can set a limit without going to a ballot, as long as we live within that guideline.
Correct.
But no more than two.
Yeah. No less than two.
Do you?
Huh?
No less than.
No, less than two.
Yeah.
So does it mean four is okay?
Yeah. No, I mean, it would mean we could set the number of.
We can't set it less than two.
Right.
We can set it at ten if you want.
Right.
Whatever.
Yeah.
So here, here's, here's the question that I have. Are we trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist? I mean, I've always been of the opinion that it's an economic thing, right? I mean, you may have a spike, but it kind of leveled itself out, because they can't compete. So I think we're, we're legislating for something that's.
Gonna legislate itself.
Too many people trying to be at the table.
Right.
Exactly.
I mean, everybody I talked to, well, when I was talking to Amy, you know, with KP Law the other day, we were talking about it, and she was saying, there was that first flux where everybody was there, then it died down. Now there's another one. But the big players are coming in from, you know, other parts of the country, and these little guys are just gonna get picked off. When the dust settles, what are you gonna end up with, you know?
Maybe like cable TV?
Yeah.
All of them pop, and then the big guys came in and consolidated it.
Yeah.
So there is something.
Video rentals.
Coming down the line, the Cumberland, are you aware of the Cumberland Farm, what Cumberland Farms is doing?
In Hudson?
No, no, in the state. They filed for a ballot question.
They tried that on before. They tried that on before. They did.
I, I'm just telling you what they're doing this year, and I've listed a couple of the articles in there for your reference. But they are proposing, and they've written a ballot question, to lift the, the cap on liquor licenses, which will affect marijuana licenses, right, because it's twenty percent is of the number of liquor licenses. So. Are you proposing no limit, or are you just suggesting that?
Yeah, I am. I think it's an economic thing, and I think we're legislating for something that I don't see. I don't see there gonna be an issue. I really don't.
So there are a number of, of things that, that have been happening with regards to these companies, and I'm sure you've seen them. Aurora Cannabis just laying off five hundred employees, Wheat Maps has laid off a lot. Stocks are plummeting, and a lot of these larger cultivators are dumping their weed, they're producing too much, right, we're seeing this in other states. So while you say that it's self-limiting, let's say we don't have a limit, and we allow, you know, River Road West to become a little green mile, and we allow in some of these companies, but like you said, it becomes self-limiting, right? And they do close up, because they're just too small to compete, or then have we lost opportunities in those areas? Now you have a couple cultivators and other facilities. So when they do close up shop, I guess you're saying we can bring in someone else into those?
We could.
We could. But is that, is that really prudent, you know, I guess, and that's as a.
Why do we have to bring in a marijuana cultivator, if the marijuana cultivator that was there went out of business?
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again.
You're, you're suggesting that if the marijuana cultivator goes out of business, that choice is to bring another cultivator in?
No.
What are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting that, that it's an exit opportunity cost, I don't know what the term is, but you pass on other opportunities that could be longer-term, you know, higher.
I don't agree with you. Because if, if I'm going to buy a piece of property, right, and I'm going to invest a boatload of money to get that there, I'm thinking of your River Road West example, right?
Well, that's where we're zoned for it, right?
Right. So, alright, so I invest, pick a number, you have to purchase the land, build the building, operate the business.
Sure.
Multiple millions of dollars.
Absolutely.
Right? Now, walk away from that, fifty million dollars, or whatever the amount is. I got the business established, we start growing it, we grab, we decide that this isn't for us, because I made a horrible calculation and whatever. So we have a building that's exist. So we have a building that's existing, right? So what would be the difference if that was going to be, pick a number, a widget manufacturing company that came in, right, and decided that they couldn't operate there and they left?
Right. Well, I, I think that what I'm asking you to do is to look at what's happening. You know, this isn't widget, this isn't just any other commodity.
Okay, okay, hold on. But you're asking us now to spot zone or to incubate something for that site?
No, no, no. What I'm asking you to do is, as a planning board, to plan for the town and to consider whether or not this is an economic plus for the town, considering that there are other disadvantages, and we're seeing it in other states. So I think that's some of the reasons that other towns have been limiting it, and they find their own way to limit it, whether it's through numbers or whether it's through buffer zones. So that's what I'm finding.
Isn't that what we did when we established to have these zones in those locations?
No, it isn't. It's like saying we have, so we have fourteen liquor licenses, right?
No, 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 no. I'm saying we, we've established rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Right, to locate, potentially locate these type of businesses in certain zones.
Absolutely.
Right? So those zones inherently put in the protections. So you can't put it in somebody's backyard. You can't put it in agricultural.
Package stores.
We're not talking about package stores.
No, no, it's, it's relevant because it's the
Why is it relevant?
Because it's another business, right? That is, we're zoned for certain areas for our liquor.
So you're suggesting that I could put a liquor store in an agricultural?
No, can you please let me finish?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So we have a certain number of licenses for liquor stores, correct?
Yes.
We also zoned in certain areas for these liquor stores, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are they self-limiting? Why do we bother having a maximum number of liquor licenses in our town? Wouldn't zoning be enough for them to be self-limiting? That's all I'm saying. I'm looking at it that way. That's all. So I'm gonna ask you that same question.
I see your point. However, I think that we've, we've got a pretty good tight
What makes you say that? Have we done an impact study? Do we understand this to the extent that we need to in order to decide what that maximum number should be?
If you could establish fifteen medical grow facilities on the limited business parcels that we have here in town with the limited amount and the investment that you need, I don't see you ever possibly reaching that, that amount.
So I guess
Are we trying to limit all types of marijuana establishments or only retail?
Well, I guess that's up to you to decide right now. You can't ban a single type of business. The minimum requirement is really just for retail. There is no minimum requirement for other types of marijuana businesses. That was really just established for retail. So that twenty percent dictates the amount of retail shops you can have. So you can set your limit for other marijuana establishments wherever you want.
Well, I'm not sure why we would set a limit on other marijuana establishments, as it says here. But if we have a limit, I mean, we have some reason that we chose to limit the number of alcohol retail establishments, right? We limited, I mean, it's a big number, nineteen, but for some reason we chose to do that.
But that's state.
That's what I thought.
Oh, it's the state that sets that?
Mm-hmm. It's based on population.
So is the state doing that for?
Is the state doing?
Same thing for marijuana.
These are all state regulations.
No, but is the state setting limits for marijuana like they do for alcohol?
Maximum limits? They're leaving that up to the municipalities.
So if we were to rewrite this, because this is written incorrectly. And it was, vote to amend the zoning violation, and it was just retail.
Yeah.
Marijuana establishments.
That would be consistent with limiting the number of retail liquor.
Right.
Why not? We could, there's obviously a reason that we wanted, well, at the state level, we wanted to limit retail alcohol. Seems like you should be consistent.
And in order to, to back you up on that, there was, an article came out about a month ago. There was a study done in Oregon. And what they found is that, it was actually published in American Journal of Prevention Medicine in February of this year. And it was, they found that, let me read it, researchers investigated whether legalization of recreational marijuana sales and retail availability of marijuana in Oregon counties were associated with higher levels of adolescent marijuana use. And their conclusion was, that it was, the lead author, Dr. Pascal, said that the study indicated that, um, that the, I'm sorry, the greater retail availability of marijuana in Oregon communities may be contributing to an increase in marijuana use among adolescents. So greater local restrictions on numbers of licensed marijuana retail outlets are needed to reduce the social availability of it to the adolescents. Right now
There seem to be many studies like that, and the results are random.
No, these are recent large meta-analysis studies. These are very controlled. This is not the same as all the stuff that was flying around two years ago. This, like I said, where it was published in the American Journal of Prevention Medicine. These are, and the National Institute of Drug Abuse just came out with their study, Monitoring the Future, very, very serious study. Very large, I think the sample was about eleven thousand, which noted that eighth, it's noted that in twenty nineteen, the percentage of adolescents who vaped marijuana in the last twelve months was the second largest increase ever observed. For both eighth and tenth grades, daily use increased by the highest amount ever observed, ever tracked since nineteen ninety-one. So for all secondary students, the increase in marijuana vaping translated to one million additional marijuana vapors in twenty nineteen compared to twenty eighteen. We're talking adolescents here. So they're seeing a very direct correlation in states where it is legalized. Now they're showing that where we have retail establishments, they're seeing an even closer correlation to the increase in use. And of course, I'm sure you've seen what the Surgeon General has just said, and the most recent studies out of Boston have, have showed a direct link of psychosis, schizophrenia, depression, and anxiety. And they're pretty close to saying it's, it's causal.
So, so
Yes.
What about the possibility of saying two retail? I mean, there's never gonna be any more than two anyway.
Probably not.
There, there may not be any.
Right.
We're like, but
Well, if you wanna pick a number to allow the voters to vote on?
Yeah.
It seems like a good number, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Give him a shot.
Okay, and then what's the rationale for that number? Is there a percentage of how we calculated two?
Based on the state formula.
Yeah.
It's based on the state formula, based on our liquor licenses.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as we can demonstrate it's not an arbitrary number that we just pulled out of the air. And it's retails.
And it's retail.
Right.
Is there, is there a limit in Hudson?
I didn't, I didn't. It's a hard number to find online. I'd have to call.
Yeah.
I'm sure that Margaret, I think, I, yeah, she can probably do that, just to call her colleagues, but
What did you ask about Hudson?
Whether they, whether Hudson has voted a limit on the number of retail marijuana establishments in town.
So those off-premise retail licenses, those are full, yeah, I know some of them, there's like wine and beer. Do you know, or?
Well, I think that maybe what the A B W M and W M C mean, I'm guessing we got alcoholic beverage and W was wine, but I don't know what M and C are.
Would that be malt?
Malt?
It could be. Oh, you want me to run down and ask Mary?
No, no, it's all right.
I just don't know how that
That's a good guess. What's C then?
The number.
That's full, that's full. Is Regal, Regal Cinema doesn't have a full license, do they?
I don't think they have any license, do they?
Yeah.
They do?
You can get a beer.
Oh, you can?
I didn't know that.
Yep.
Hey, they're trying to keep up with the strand.
Flat Penny's full.
Get a beer there?
Grills full.
Strand?
Both around the country club, and I would assume that
Where?
The Strand?
Right.
You got little tables, buy food.
Oh, you mean in Clinton? Oh, yeah, well, let's step in.
Play decent movies.
Yeah, they're
It's crummy, fried food and, and beer.
Right. Pub food and beer and we run movies. But it's a great experience.
Yes, it is.
That's, that's it. That's it.
Can I ask you one question before you?
We're gonna, you're not gonna alter anything, I think. You can go ahead, but
She might, you never know, let her ask a question.
Yeah, well, you said, you can ask her a question.
So I, I know that, you know, I guess I'm grateful that
Time to go home.
Well, end of question.
Uh-oh, the chairman has to turn the lights back on.
Oh, I believe, I thought it was just the emergency lights up there.
Can we give her five minutes? How long are we gonna give her?
You gotta hold it, hold it.
Hold it down?
Yeah.
Yeah. Easy.
All right, you got twenty minutes.
So I, I guess that
No, she doesn't have twenty minutes.
I guess, so like I said, you know, I'm grateful that you, you know, you're going to ask for a limit for retail. But I'm just curious, because you, you, you know, you're really for that. Why do you not want to consider setting a limit for something like cultivation? I'm just curious your reasoning behind that.
I think Don't limit alcohol, distilleries.
Distilleries.
Right.
And breweries.
Have in this town? I mean, that
We don't have in this town, but why would we want to limit it?
So, but just let's, but I'm asking for your reasoning behind it. Is that the only reason that we don't limit distilleries?
Yeah.
That's it?
It's
A brewery, you know.
I agree with Tom. A lot of this is self-regulating by the
Yeah, it's kind of a self-regulator at that point.
But I think, do we understand what, how this will affect our environment and our ecology in the town? How it will affect the water and the runoff
Well, you know, I don't
odors. I'm just, so my question
Okay, but, okay.
as a planning board, I'm asking, do we understand the impact of one cultivator in our town?
Do you understand the, the, the impact that a meat purveyor gets from all the methane and stuff that's ended in
It's not mine. I'm asking you as a planning board.
Yeah, I'm saying
That's all. Not, you don't need to ask me. I'm asking you because this is your role here. So what I'm asking is, do we understand the impact of one of these types of industries in our town? Because I know when other developers come in, I mean, that's what you do, right? You're like, this is how it's gonna impact the water, this is how it's gonna impact the schools, this is how it's gonna, and so on. So
And so as part of site plan approval, any one of these establishments, and as part of the host agreement, I imagine to some degree as well, they're gonna have to go through a certain number of steps, just like any business, and deal with issues of runoff and odor and all that traffic. And as a result of what's been learned from other communities, I would argue that the ZBA is probably gonna be more prepared to deal with those questions and probably more diligent about it because it's a marijuana establishment than they would be with a number of other entities that would show up. So I think that the system that's in place has to be the one that, you know, rules the day. I mean, the town voted to allow a certain number of uses.
Got that.
I, I think establishing a limit on, taking a question to the town meeting floor to establish a limit on the number of retail uses is a good way to start and see what happens. You know, what we've always found, I think, as a planning board, is that you go to the town meeting and you, you try to sound out what it is that people are willing to support. And frankly, the efforts that you've made to limit have not worked. And I think a lot of that has to do with trying to bite off more than you can chew at one time. And that, my advice has always been, look at it as a smaller piece of the pie, address that, go to town meeting, get support for one stage, and if that works, and you begin to see a positive response in terms of some other possibilities, then expand from there. But, but trying to limit all marijuana establishments with one bylaw will not result in anything, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
You won't get the support you need at town meeting because you need two-thirds.
I, yeah.
And if you go with this, and two, which is what we can do in terms of the state regs, and you're successful, then you've made one step, and then you proceed from there.
Well, so I appreciate that. I've already said that. I really do. But the reason that I failed for the last, the last few times at town meeting wasn't because I bit off more than I could chew. But I actually started this process about three years ago, and, and I was really willing to work with our town leadership. But unfortunately, when there is no support at the town meeting, that, that's a hard thing to convince your average town meeting goer. So, well, so I appreciate what you said, but I don't believe that it was for the same reason, but
I think if it was a complex zoning issue that people were not familiar with and had little time to study up on
It could have. Three years we've been trying to
And if the planning board went and tried to make a case. But this is something that's top of mind for people throughout the Commonwealth in Berlin. And as a result, I think people know where they stand on a lot of these issues. And the effort that you've made to supply information, you know, you've, you've been putting information out in front of people. You've had forums, people have had opportunity to come and listen. And as a result, they've come to town meetings on a number of occasions and made a decision. And I'm saying, if you simplify the question and modify it to a degree that it's digestible, and start there, and make that first small step, then the possibility is there to expand from there. But I don't think you can use it as expansively as you've tried. And that's, and I, and I don't think it's got anything to do with whether, if the selectmen and the planning board
Of course it does. Of course it does. Come on.
I've, I've seen situations where those boards have all come to town meeting and argued in favor of something, and it doesn't work.
It gives a little more of a chance. So philosophically, we just differ there. But one thing I wanna make sure that, you know, that we understand, this was a ballot initiative back in twenty sixteen. Since then, science and legislation has been chasing it. So that's different than a law coming in that is legislated with regulations and enforcements that are well thought out. So unfortunately, we didn't have the luxury of only biting off a little bit. We needed to, to, to take this on at full force because that industry was, had already taken off way ahead of legislation. That's the difference. I understand philosophically what you're saying, and that's usually how I do things. But sometimes you don't have the benefit of being able to do that, so. But I appreciate it, and I understand your philosophy there with regards to cultivation. I don't think it's the right decision for the town, but, you know, I'm not the one in power here, so.
Well, I mean, the, the, the power is with the people, so
That's right.
the obvious
When they're well-educated and well-informed on the topics, and I think this was a very complicated issue that unfortunately, our leadership did not take hold and, and help to inform the people. It was me. I mean, you know, who am I, right?
Well
And sadly
What I'm saying to you is, go for small steps and, and be satisfied if you can begin to make some progress. And then continue on into the future.
Meanwhile, we have a pandemic at our hands. Our kids are dying, and people are getting very ill. And we could very well lose an entire generation to this, just like we did with tobacco. By the time we figure it out, they'll be on to the next product, and so will we. But what I guess many towns have tried to do is be proactive about this, take a more conservative stand, right? And, and don't go after the economics or the vast money before the industry runs ahead of you. But rather, look to But rather, look to, to really serve the people, to, to, to look out for their public health and their safety. Right now, the leading cause, the leading drug, the leading, leading cause of traffic deaths in Massachusetts right now is marijuana. That's a problem. That's new. So these things are happening.
It's actually beating out alcohol?
Beating out texting?
Yeah, it's in your email, and you can reference.
Texting, yeah.
Hard to imagine that.
It's in my email, and you can reference the article if you, if you'd like. But yeah, there's some really, there's some harmful effects that are happening in Massachusetts right now. Black market is through the roof. You know, kids are vaping at twice the national average 12-year-olds. So there's, there's some very serious impacts that we will not be able to reverse. So again, philosophically, I understand what you're saying, but we're not gonna be able to reverse. I know five teens. One now is permanent schizophrenia. Two others are suffering from psychosis, and two others have such severe depression that they're not going on to college. And that's just a little sample size.
Right here in town?
Uh, here, between here and Harvard, yeah. So, my point is, this is no time to take our time. This is time to act conservatively and to protect the citizens, at least of this town. I'm doing what I can at the state level, and many people are as well, to start reining in this commercialization. There, there's a lot of work being done at the state level, to, to limit potency, to change packaging, to ban flavors, to ban billboards. Right now, they have been after our kids. They've been advertising, which are not supposed to, as the city rules, would prohibit marijuana establishments from advertising on social media, but that's exactly what they've been doing for about four to five years now, and they circumvent these things. So they've been targeting our adolescents for many years, and, and they're taking their, their, they're using the tobacco's playbook, and they're targeting an entire generation that will addict them. Addiction rate is 50% with the high potency marijuana, because there's no limits on potency. So I know we think we're going to, you know, benefit in some way, and, and, but I, I do hope, like you said, Tim, that on a, you know, business by business basis, you know, we'll be able to protect the town, but. Thanks for listening. It's not quite 20 minutes. It was only about 15, so. I'm done now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for these, you're going to clean up the language and stuff like that. Do we need to vote on them in order to get them in front of the warrant before we meet again?
Yeah.
All of these?
Yeah, so what we've said is.
Vote on them as a body or individually?
Well, let's see if we can make it easy. One, we were satisfied with.
Do you want to vote on them one by one?
Yeah, probably. Then we can record. I move that we support placing the first article that we proposed on the warrant.
Anyone second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I move that we support the second article regarding Economic Development Committee be placed on the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion?
We already discussed it.
No, he's onto a second one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move that we support the third article regarding scenic road designation based on discussions that, developing language based on discussions that, that the town administrator has with Joe Council about how to best get it done.
Second it.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we support the fourth article that we proposed concerning the rezoning of properties that are under conservation restriction or, or town-owned.
Somebody QC the list? I second the motion.
What?
Did somebody check the list to make sure that?
He did.
I've, um. I'll run it through the assessors one more time, but.
I see a mistake.
There is a mis- there's three mistakes on yours, but not on mine.
Okay.
And, and because I don't have both in front of me, I know mine is more up to date and more correct, but there's one that says just map 24 or something like that, with no parcel, I think, for one.
Twenty-one. No parcel.
Yeah, mine, yep. But I've got an up.
With corrections.
I've got an updated list.
So are you going to vote for it with the, when he brings it up to date?
As amended.
As amended?
By me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I move that we support article five. Let me look at that one.
We just changed the word odor to resident.
Resident, yeah.
Any discussion on that one?
I didn't second it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we support article six in regard to including DMV in, in.
Gross vehicle weight.
Every instance where gross vehicle weight appears in the home-based contracting business section of the bylaw.
Second it.
Second.
Number seven.
Wait a minute, we haven't voted on it.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm letting him finish writing.
I'm doing the best I can.
You're doing all right.
Don't pressure him, because he gets messy.
What?
Don't pressure him, because he starts getting messy.
You ain't seen nothing yet.
All in favor?
Aye. Number seven, we're not gonna go forward with. That's non-conforming uses and structures pre-existing, non-conforming.
So we're gonna pass that one? Want to pass that one?
Yeah, we'll pass over that one. To see if, and then.
Number eight.
See if the town will amend the zoning bylaw section 510 in-law apartments.
We're gonna put including any additions, or any proposed additions.
Including any proposed.
Instead of what's written here.
Yeah.
Right. Second.
I suppose there should be modifications, because maybe somebody's gonna reduce the size of their house.
Yes, that happens.
I'll show you video if you want to.
I'd like to saw off some of mine with all the stuff in it.
There you go.
You ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine. For common driveways, just with the modification of turning that last section into two sentences.
Doing what?
It would say approved by the Berlin Planning Board, period.
Okay.
Second.
Doesn't it need a comma after substantial? Or the word then?
If, comma, at the discretion of the planning board, it is determined that the modification is substantial, comma, a public hearing will be required. Right?
Yeah.
I don't know if you need a comma after if, the first if. No.
The English majors here.
I'll ask my grammarian.
Who's your grammarian?
Janet.
You ready to vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then 10, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw 585. And it's gonna say no more than two retail marijuana establishments permitted, may be permitted at any.
It doesn't say retail.
That's what it's gonna say.
Okay.
And I'll, Margaret, I'll have language based on some of the stuff she's been doing, so.
Second it.
She's been talking to other towns.
It's an R and D.
Registered.
Dispensary?
I think it's a registered medical.
Dispensary, yeah. But we've scratched that.
Any more discussion?
Two retail.
Two retail.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Map six, parcel two is struck. Map six, parcel three is struck. Map six, parcel six one, we strike, and map 24, parcel one.
Where do you see that?
Dash three.
Six, parcel two and three?
Where do you see that? I don't have a 24.
On this list here of the maps. Map six, parcel two and three. Map six, parcel six one. And the, where it says map 21, parcel blank, it's map seven, it's parcel 17. And then, on the end of the list, map 24.
Oh, I don't have that one.
One, three. Those are the scratches. Everything is Conservation Commission or, um, has a CR. The only one that, the Booth property isn't under the Conservation Commission, is it?
I don't know that one, so.
It's between the dump and the town, town South Commons.
Uh, no, maybe. Is it up there in green?
No. That's why I'm.
It's a little narrow.
That's why we're proposing it. See where the dump land is, and see where the school land is. That connecting piece?
James Road.
So there's the dump land, and then.
Right.
And then, see the piece above it?
Yeah.
That's Booth.
Okay.
But I, we, it's, it's all wetland, you know?
Yeah.
That's the only one that isn't under a CR or under the Conservation Commission's control already. So there may be some debate about that.
Well, it's landlocked, too, so.
It's landlocked, yeah.
And if it's wet, it's not so useful to anybody.
I move that we authorize Ron Verushka to sign on the planning board's behalf a contract with Community Opportunities Group to do a, um, fiscal impact analysis of River Bridge with three components. A public safety component, which would be completed fairly quickly, they'd start immediately on that, to determine the impact on ambulance services and the like, because it, it's, the way the development agreement with River Bridge works, they're responsible for ambulance, and public safety is all saying, this is not gonna work. There's a lot of legal issues and jurisdictional issues, and as a result, it needs to be rewritten. So we'd ask these guys to.
That's because we set it up when there was a CCRC. Wouldn't be there.
Oh.
And we weren't as robust in terms of our capacity at that time either. So that's the first part, and they'd start that right off. Then they'd do a traffic impact review, looking at the new numbers that have, you know, what's gonna be generated now that there's a hotel rather than a market, and, you know, full apartments rather than the CCRC and all that stuff. And then they'd look at what was projected for traffic mitigation that they were responsible for. And then after September, they'd do a school impact review, which would look at, at that point, there should be 100 apartments online, so they'd look at the actual numbers that are in the facility and do some projections from that, and.
What's their names again?
It's the, Roberta Cameron, it was, Judy Barrett did it before. It's Community Opportunities Group, Inc. And then, in the final stage, they'd update municipal budget data and cost estimates for all departments, and then obtain data to update revenue projections, and revise the projections of net fiscal impact utilizing updated cost projections, and then come back to us. So it's 14,000. Sennys, the River Bridge would pay for it, and.
All right, we're done.
You're optimistic, Jack.
But Ron needs to sign it, so I was, I can take it to him and have him sign it.
Isn't he on vacation?
No.
He's just not a, not peppy. He was talking about trying to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, so I move that we authorize Ron to sign it.
Yeah.
And then, Central Mass, Berlin, the town of Berlin recently awarded a contract to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to complete a self-evaluation and transition plan in compliance with the Americans for Disabilities Act. CMRPC is subcontracted with another firm, and they just wanted a self-evaluation. And basically, it just says, if you have a disability, what impact does it have on your, your opportunity to take advantage of our services? If you're sight impaired and.
You can't see anyways.
You, you can't go online and, I mean, you can hear what's being said, but if there's graphics, you can't see it. And we don't have any alternatives for that. And if you're hearing impaired, you could see stuff, but you wouldn't, there's no captions going on on the.
We have assisted listening devices at town meetings.
At town meeting, but in terms of planning board meetings, I think this is just specific to the planning board.
How about people that are on the planning board that can't hear?
Did you vote on the, on the signing?
No. Did we vote on the signing? Yeah. Didn't we? We all said yes, we wanted Ron to sign it.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. So I was gonna, I'll finish filling this out.
Do you have anything else?
Tomorrow night, the ZBA has a hearing for a proposal to build 30-something duplexes. Tomorrow night, the ZBA has a hearing for a proposal to build thirty-something duplexes on Worcester Sands parcel on River Road, arguing that it is a.
Buy right use.
That it's a residential care facility.
Was that the same guy?
Any institution licensed by the state which is maintained for the purpose of caring for three or more persons admitted for nursing or convalescent care for supervision and care incident to old age, for ambulatory persons or for retirement home care for elderly persons, including convalescent or nursing homes, rest homes, and homes for the aged.
Why are they doing duplexes?
Well, I I guess the question is, is the is the planning board convinced that thirty-two duplexes is a.
Residential care facility.
Is a licensed by the state residential care facility?
No.
Because I'm perfectly willing to go to the ZBA tomorrow and say, planning board doesn't necessarily believe that this meets the definition.
No.
Yeah, I don't think it does. I think it's a separate thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. They came to conservation with the plan and it looks very similar.
To the original.
To the original, minus the fancy landscaping.
Right.
And the two-car garages. Maybe one car garage, because I asked them, I said, are they single story? And he didn't actually answer.
No, we're not.
Yeah, the two-bedroom.
Well, you want that for people that can't get around.
The residential care facility is is allowed in the limited business zone for up to 100 patients, but it's it really says patients. I mean, it's a and licensed by the state.
This is like everybody that has a service dog that isn't a service dog.
Hey, are the service iguana?
You're comfortable with someone saying the planning board, do we, should we vote that we're not too keen on it or should we?
Can. You want me to call for a vote?
Yeah.
All right, we vote on whether we allow Tim to go say we're not for it. At the ZBA. All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll I'll write these up again, send them around, because we still got a week. And then if you see holes or problems with language that's trying to keep in line with what we've agreed on tonight.
You can write all six of them.
Yeah, we'll do all. And then and then it'll go to town council and according to the memo we got today, we've got another week after submission. Isn't that what it said?
Yeah.
So to modify language too, so. And I think these are going to go to town council pretty quickly rather than, I mean, there may be some more complex ones that are on the warrant that are waiting.
Carolyn.
Do you know about the.
Is conservation really going to try for the conservation bylaws?
All of the content of the town meeting in 2019 deemed invalid?
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, what about that?
I was talking to someone from the Conservation Commission. I was inspecting my well water retention.
You have not.
Retention pond. And she told me that.
Is it a retention pond or a detention pond?
What's the difference?
One just retains it for a while, a detention holds it.
Well, we're drilling tomorrow and she thinks I should keep the mud out of the pond.
She thinks you're what?
She thinks I should keep the drilling mud out of the pond. Was that retention or detention?
I don't know. Is it is it one that slowly leaks the water out?
No, hopefully not.
Well, then it's a detention pond.
Detention, okay. Anyways, she was asking if I knew anything about the town meeting from last year being deemed invalid.
You should ask, we'll have to. Should we close our meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
I move that we adjourn.